We work better together. And I can be the voice for our community. I've done it before. I've done it for our communities within all of the places I work at.
Thank you, Sylvia.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Nguyen. I'm running to be your San Jose City Councilmember because I love this community. And I want to be your humble public servant. I've lived in this area for about 30 years. I went to Evergreen Elementary, Quimby Oak, and Silver Creek High School. Because of the great educational opportunities here, I was able to go to college and graduate from law school. During that time, I also had an experience working with at-risk youth, kids who were at risk of dropping out or joining gangs. And this opened my eyes to a need out there in the community for people who care and can advocate for people who can't speak for themselves. During this time, I also found that donating blood was important to me. I've donated blood a few times a year for about eight years now. Part of my public service is also serving on the water board, Santa Clara Water District Independent Monitoring Committee Board. That allowed me to learn about our water issues, what needs to be done to fix that infrastructure, and also that there are other ways to help our communities. Lastly, I served on the San Jose Evergreen Valley College $500 million bond oversight committee because I care about education and fiscal responsibility. With that experience, I learned that there are local issues here in San Jose, not just for the greater valley, but also in our district. Thank you, and I appreciate your support and remember.
You're next.
I'll stay set.
Oh, you're gonna squelch me, huh? All right, in one minute, would you please explain why you've chosen to run for City Council?
To reiterate what I said earlier, I grew up in this area. I care a lot about it. It gave me a lot of opportunities to be successful today, and I feel that I owe a debt to this community to serve and be a public servant.
Thank you.
Deanna.
Sorry. District Eight has been my home for the last 15 years, and so it's where my husband and I are raising our children, our two wonderful children. It's where we own a home. It's where I work as an Evergreen School Board member, and it's also where we at times struggle, just like many other families live in this valley. You know, I was raised in a family that honored serving one another, and I really took this family value and made it into my career, which has led me ultimately into public service. And so I want to make sure that our streets are safe one more time, that our retired community has some options to keep a healthy and independent lifestyle, so that our children can play in the streets without fear of cars speeding too fast in our streets. And lastly, to really provide our youth with opportunities.
Well timed, thank you. So Sylvia, this one, this is a short one, 30 seconds. Could you please name your top endorsements or the ones you're most proud of?
Sure, the ones I'm most proud of is Supervisor Dave Cortezzi. His wife Patty Cortezzi has an East Side Union High School District trustee. I'm endorsed by DON, which is the Democratic Women Involved Association, the Evergreen Teachers Association, three other supervisors on the county, councilmember by Delena Carrasco, and various of our neighborhood associations on the other side of Capitol Expressway, Meadow Fair, and Tully Alcolic.
My endorsements are Assemblymember Councilman Chu, Councilmember Johnny Camus, Councilmember Tam Nguyen, Councilmember Maun Nguyen, Citizens for Fiscal Responsibility, Chamber of Commerce, and if I am considered a Senator, Senator, and Democratic Club.
Thank you. Now let's get into the meat of policy and the issues that we all face. So the first question is going to be a two-minute answer, and it has to do with Measure F. What is your position on Measure F? And how will you help to ensure that our neighborhoods are kept safe? Jimmy, we'll start with you.
Measure F is a settlement between the city and the unions that puts to rest the pension reform issue of 2012. It is something that the city and the unions, after so many years of conflict, have agreed upon, and they say, if we put that in, we can save, I believe, roughly $30 million a year for the next 30 years, and enact pension reform and health care benefits that is sustainable for the city. And also sends a message to possible recruits and city employees that we get along with each other now, and we've put behind the conflict. And the second part is, how would I help?
Yes. How would you help ensure that our neighborhoods are kept safe?
Well, we need more police and firefighters, especially police officers. One thing a councilmember can do to help recruit more officers is join the recruiting team and show the public that we're working together now, and we don't have these conflicts that we had over the past few years. As someone who believes in collaboration and involving a lot of people in the process, if we do that, we can send a message to possible recruits that San Jose is a warm place for police and firefighters to come and work, and we support our employees.
Same question?
Yes.
Yes. So I do support Measure F. I think it's time for us to really put this pension reform, all of the tension that is created, really behind us, and let everyone know up and down Northern California that we value our police officers and that we value public safety. We've had many, many instances, especially on the next door, of continued burglaries. One week after the primary election, my neighbor in my backyard had his home burglarized as my children played in our side of our backyard, 2:00 in the afternoon. So it's really brazen, really bold, and so we need more bodies out there. Really, our police department is doing a wonderful job with what they have. The reality is, we need more bodies out there, and I think Measure F will help start rebuilding our police department, reinstating our traffic enforcement unit, and in general, I think creating some great morale for our police officers. It's difficult when you're not valued with your pension and pay, especially when you're risking your life. And I know this is a tough career. My sister is a police officer in Oakland, so she's got a tough job, and you know, I really respect what she does on a daily basis, and I want to make sure that I respect our police officers here in San Jose as well.
So we'll start with you, Sylvia. This is like suburban San Jose, and we have some extraordinary schools around here that we're all happy with and enjoy, but getting to and from the schools is often fraught with frustration. What are your thoughts on improving traffic flow in the district and especially safety around our schools? One minute, please.
Sure. Oh, so you turned me off.
You definitely won't.
We're gonna start over, right?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so we have a walk-in role program that is administered by the city of San Jose. We have it in our Evergreen School District, and it's been really successful. And so it's aimed at encouraging a healthier lifestyle, spending, you know, parents walking or biking our children to school, and really reducing the congestion. It also goes hand in hand with creating some awareness for our drivers to look out for our students as they're walking to and from school. And so I think the solution is really going to be, it's gonna be really different for each of the schools in our school. What we did is we created a third lane, allowing two-way traffic to still exist, and so that pickup and drop-off time was more efficient and less congested for our neighborhood. And I think that the Department of Transportation can do this kind of assessment to each of our schools.
One thing we can do to alleviate traffic is support our public transportation system. On the ballot is Measure A for the county tax, excuse me, bond. If we improve our public transportation system, perhaps we can get a lot of people out of their cars, lessen our apartment footprint, and allow people to get to know other people when you try to write on the transportation. About safety around schools, in the last few months, my team and I have gone to local schools to give out coffee in the morning, reach out to parents, see some people who have come to our table to have some coffee and conversation about what's happening here in District Eight. Ironically, some of these same parents are parents who are speeding in these school zones when they drop off their kids, and some of them also talk about the lack of safety. So I find it ironic, but anyway, a lot of the schools have one or two crossing guards. Some of them might, I think we should have two crossing guards, so that is one way we can help with the school safety.
Thank you. Let's talk about the city's budget a little bit. You know, they've got $3 billion roughly in total spending and $1 billion in discretionary general funds. Do you think that they're being spent efficiently and effectively, and what, if anything, would you change about what the city is spending its money on and how it spends it? And we'll start with you, Jimmy. How do you get two minutes?
I'm sure with $3 billion, there's some leakage somewhere out there. And priorities change from year to year, so if our auditing team can look into the resources, how our money is spent, and pay attention to it, as well as councilmembers and their staff, perhaps we can eliminate some of the leakage. I'm not saying there isn't, but inefficiencies exist in all large organizations. When we're talking about $3 billion in a city of 1 million people and something like 3,000, 3,000 to 5,000 employees, there are probably things that we can do better, and we should maintain some diligence on that year to year.
Do you have any concrete examples of what you would recommend changing?
Recently, something that made the paper is the San Jose Police Department went to Hawaii to recruit police officers at a cost of roughly $50,000. I'm not sure if that's the best use of our money, and not as someone with direct experience, but it's something that raises alarm bells for me. $50,000 to Hawaii or $50,000 here locally in California to recruit people who could just drive into our city, or we could drive to meet these recruits makes sense. That's one example.
Thank you. All right, Sylvia, what, if anything, would you change about the way the city is spending their funds? And are they being spent efficiently and effectively, and how would you help improve things?
Well, every public institution needs to continually take a look at how they're spending money and creating more efficient and effective ways. Certainly, when we, when the economy is down, we really tighten our belts, right? And just like our families do. And when the economy is well, this is when we need to start living within our means, but also growing back some of the programs that have been missing, and so the programs that have a high rate of return. And I'm talking about after-school programs, which are relatively low cost for the rate of return that we get from them, and especially around public safety. So it keeps our children off the streets, keeps our burglary rates down, keeps truancy down, offers some opportunity and benefits for development for our children, and it's a direct impact on public policy, I mean, in San Jose and public safety. And so I would continually look at for programs that have high rate of returns in order to make the best use of our budget. I think something that I'd like to see a little different is having quarterly audits so that we can take a look at some of the programs and how they're doing, and if they're running efficiently, and if they're not, let's, excuse me, let's make some changes, and not at the end of the year, but you know, throughout, on a quarterly basis.
Thank you. One of the more polarizing issues in this district lately has been the Evergreen, San Jose Evergreen Community College District's proposal to rezone 27 acres of land over by San Felipe and Yerba Buena. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think like everyone else, we have to be very careful and take a look at the impact that new development has around our neighborhoods. The traffic impact, the impact it has on quality of life and infrastructures. And so these are some of the things that I'm considering as I'm learning more about this development, and I think once I completely study this project, I will be able to say whether I oppose it or not. We have to be very careful with the type of, if it's retail, what type of retail are they bringing in, and just be really responsible about bringing growth into Evergreen and make sure that it makes sense for our community if in case it does happen.
Jimmy, same question. Evergreen Valley College property.
Like many people here in this room, I share your concerns about the development there at Evergreen Valley College. I am happy to say I agree with you. We should not develop that land for commercial purposes. Educational land is limited out there, and I'm happy to say that I support education and I want to improve our educational offers here in District Eight. There are many people who say that kids here on the east side drive all the way to Deans College, and we have a perfectly good community college down the street. Why would we waste that resource? So no, I don't think we should develop that land for commercial purposes. We should keep it for educational purposes.
So we'll start with Jimmy this time. Where do you stand on the issue of development in Coyote Valley?
We have a green belt over there. I don't know how far it reaches into Coyote Valley, but it's nice to have a green space like Coyote Valley. Our city is growing, the core is growing, and if we can concentrate our development in downtown and stagger the rest of it, it's nice to have a green space like Coyote Valley out there.
I also think that we shouldn't develop in Coyote Valley. We also have endangered species out there that we need to make sure that we protect, and open space always adds to the quality of life of our families and our community, and so I would aim to protect that.
Okay. So that being said, housing affordability is a big issue in San Jose today. What would you do to help resolve the issue of housing affordability within San Jose?
Sure, so affordable housing is really important, and Measure A is going to help us create some stock, housing stock for our most vulnerable population, as will give us some opportunity for first-time homebuyer options for working families. And so our homeless population has really changed, their faces have changed. It's no longer our veterans, it's no longer folks who have mental health issues and are just maybe straight-bound, but there are families who are getting outpriced because it's just so expensive to live in this valley. I've been talking with folks as I knock on doors and talk about the importance of Measure A in supporting that affordable housing as the first real option that we have.
Sure. We've hit the question.
Yeah, it has to do with what would you do to help ameliorate the problem of affordable housing within San Jose, provide more affordable housing?
Number one, and I misspoke earlier, I think I said Measure A when I should have said Measure B for the tax measure, but on this housing question, the housing bond, that's about $950 million on the ballot, that's one way our local leaders have said that we can help people who are homeless, veterans, and possibly even teachers with the affordable housing problem. So if we pass that, we're supposed to get something like 3,000 to 5,000 units online to address that issue. Another thing we can do is make it easier for developers to develop in the core San Jose, so we have more housing, dense housing near public transit lines. It's an efficient way to build housing without impacting the surrounding areas, traffic-wise and so on. So one, the affordable housing measure, bond, excuse me, and two, develop high density in the core near transit lines so that we don't impact traffic.
All right. Driving around the district, there seems to be a fair amount of empty retail space, a couple of large grocery store pads, and the Walgreens over at Evergreen Village Square is swinging a mine, as well as a general complaint about a lack of available dining options within District Eight. You have two minutes or so to tell us what your plans are for attracting more businesses and for encouraging retail development within the district.
As a councilmember, not only do we pass policy and help open conflict, we're also the cheerleader for our district and city, and as a councilmember, I take that into account, driving around the area, and we all know, safe mark, safe way down here, as well as some of the other storefronts are vacant. So knowing we have this capacity, a councilmember should go out there and tell businesses, you know, the big ones, the small ones, the mom and pops, that we have these spaces here, and we want to get you in them. What do you need from me or the district or the city in order to make that happen? So that's one of the best ways a councilmember can help with these empty storefronts. Be the advocate, the cheerleader, to say, we have a nice area here with great stores. We want to help you start a business here. What do you need from us?
So the Health Trust recently did a study in this area, and they released a report that reflected that we have a food desert in our district. We are one of the districts that has the highest median income, and yet we have the food desert because our businesses continue to close. And you know, for folks who are retired and sometimes a little bit bound to our district, it doesn't really provide a lot of options. And so I think the city needs to really take a look at the planning, the permitting process, and how they're supporting small business owners, and especially those business owners that have, that are culturally different, that provide some of that diversity and great dining options for our community. My father, when I was growing up, he opened up a restaurant, and he did not have the support and the know-how from somebody who might know better, right? Somebody who's gone down that road, a business owner that could be an advocate and a champion for rising small business owners. And so eventually, that restaurant shut down, but it is the small businesses that really provide the majority of jobs in this county, and we need to make sure that we're supporting them just as much as we're supporting big business.
Thank you. So speaking of big business, one of the best things that we can do to reduce communities is to get businesses located closer to residences. And by businesses, I mean commercial and industrial, not residential, or not retail in this case. We've got excellent space down by Blossom Hill and 101 and the Hellier Business Park. What can be done to attract more businesses into that area?
The question is, what can we do to...
Attract more businesses down into the Blossom Hill 101 Business Park area?
Sure. So I think the mayor is doing a wonderful job in reaching out to big businesses. I think that is definitely a strength. And with big businesses, we also need to be responsible and make sure that we have the housing stock to match, right? So we need to make sure that we're growing responsibly, and that we're not adding to our traffic congestion that is already so horrible and damaging our streets with more potholes. So you know, I personally would make sure that I visit the other cities in ways that I can learn their strategies on how to bring in more businesses into that area, maybe creating some incentives for big businesses, and at the same time, small businesses or folks who are having mid-sized companies, because those are the folks that can really grow larger than maybe some of the, you know, some of the Yahoos and Facebooks. And so I think we need to give a chance to all different levels of business and not just focus on the large ones. So being able to champion the safety of our city and the beauty of our city and really attract talent is another strategy, because San Jose is definitely a place to live, it's fun, and it's very happy. We're far from the city center, but once you get in there, it's very active.
Thank you. Jimmy, encouraging businesses to locate down in the Eaton Valley Business Park by Blossom Hill 101.
Well, similar to my answer in the last question, you know, how do we fill businesses or get businesses to come down to that area the same way we would for District Eight? We tell these people, we have these resources, what do you need to move down here? What is it about this area that makes it better than, say, Santa Clara or Palo Alto? In South San Jose, if you head south from 101, you won't have the traffic problem. If we improve our public transportation infrastructure, people will take the train down that way as well. But it comes back to being a councilmember who advocates for his district. If we have these resources that no one knows about these other companies, somebody has to go out there, reach out to them, say, hey, we have these businesses, come on now. How do we make it happen? What do you need from us? Is it public transportation? Is it traffic alleviation? Is it affordable housing? Or is it just the fact that you don't know about the place? Maybe that's the reason. But a councilmember should advocate for their district, know what resources we have here, what we can offer people, whether locally or Palo Alto. Maybe they don't want to deal with the headache of all that traffic in that area. That's something we can sell. Drive down this way, you'll go in the opposite direction of traffic, you won't spend an hour.
All right, thank you. On that location, the land up above Evergreen Valley property, the earth land that's currently zoned, commercial, industrial, would you ever consider supporting, changing the zoning of that to residential, and if so, under what circumstances?
I'm happy to consider it, but San Jose has a jobs-housing imbalance. That means that for every unit of housing we put out there, we are losing money. So does it make sense to change industrial, commercial land to residential land? Not at this time, but I am happy to consider it. Maybe some factors come along that says, okay, it's a good time or good idea to change it, but at this time, I think it's best for us to keep it as is, to focus on the housing Johnson balance.
I would also support to keep it at the zoning that it's at right now. I think that our housing options should be applied everywhere else, and I know that we are focused on urban villages, so you know, not growing up instead of taking a lot of our space and being really efficient with retail and housing and in transit-oriented places. And so unfortunately, that area is not transit-oriented friendly, and I would worry about the traffic impact it would have if we actually changed the zoning to housing. So I would keep it as is.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both very much for your answers. Now we'll go into your closing statement. We'll start with you, Jimmy.
You have two minutes.
Two minutes, great.
Thank you to the District Eight roundtable, to Pat for hosting, and you good folks for taking your time out here on a Thursday to come out and listen to us. If it hasn't come through clearly now, I'm a person who values collaboration and involving many stakeholders in the decision-making process. I believe in taking as much information as possible to make the right decision for all of us. As a councilmember, I'd be happy to listen to as many of you as possible as I walk out the precincts and talk to roughly 45,000 people from now until 33 days, November 8. But even after that, it's important for me to represent the people that I'm reaching out to. You good folks and all the other voters who take their time out to vote and participate in our democracy, you have a voice. Sometimes you might feel that it's not heard, but it's important for me to talk to all of you, get your opinions, and whether we agree or not, at least I heard you, and I'll try to represent your interests at City Hall. Thank you.
Sylvia, please hold your applause until Sylvia's done. Thank you.
So my father and my mom were immigrants to... So my father and my mom were immigrants to this country. My dad worked as a bracero for many years until he had the option to be naturalized in this country and brought some of his family over. I was the first one, born and raised here, forty-two years. Yeah, that's how old I am. And I've been very fortunate to be living here in Evergreen for fifteen years. And so my parents really changed the course of my life when they made the choice to immigrate and take that risk and change their home to California. And so I'm really grateful for that opportunity. My parents are from very humble beginnings. My dad was a cook before he retired and yet he was a homeowner, three times. He facilitated homeownership to me in a wonderful neighborhood. And so my parents really transferred a really hard work ethic that I've taken into account throughout my whole career. I've worked really hard to be where I'm at. I have a master's in public administration that really helps me understand public policy and public service. Most importantly, my heart is really in the community. I want to make sure that our streets are safe, that our children are thriving, that our businesses have, that our businesses are full and there aren't any empty storefronts. And so all of my experience has led me to believe that we need somebody at City Hall who will do their homework, who will listen and will take all of that information and create some wonderful opportunities for our neighborhoods. I am that person and I would like to be your voice at City Hall. I've done it in many different arenas, as a school board member and now at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you both, Kim.